Somehow it's not. That's it?
Uh huh.
So I'll call the uh Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting to order. First item is roll call, Michael Kane.
I'm here.
Just briefly to check here. So you have three people, which is our forum. So we can conduct business. First item is a consideration of public hearings. We have R E G A twenty-three zero 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 one. Short-term rentals. Did you wanna?
Yeah, I just.
Where we stand.
Where you left off. Exactly, exactly. So. Yeah, so the last time you discussed this was February twenty-seventh, I believe, and the recording was not very good. So I just want to briefly go over what all you discussed and where you're at right now, just as a refresher. So you you reviewed all the comments that you received at the public hearing. You talked about whether or not the RS zone should be included in the zones where short-term rentals are allowed with conditions, and you decided not to do that at this point. You also talked about whether or not you would have a two-night stay minimum, decided that was not necessary. Whether there should be a separation from adjacent properties. Again, you decided that was not necessary. Whether the noise restrictions should be eliminated, decided that was not necessary. And you also discussed whether a property manager living on the site could substitute as a property owner living on the site, and you decided that you would leave the requirements as written and not make that substitution. So you also reviewed some suggestions about changes to the definition of short-term rentals and adding the definition of primary residence. So you agreed to leave the definition of short-term rental as you had written it, and you would like to consider adding the definition of primary residence. You also agreed that some clarification was needed for what's how how short-term rentals are regulated in the RM zone. So both of those items, adding the the definition of primary residence and and clarifying the language about RM, I agreed to talk to the town attorney about it, since they were not in the original draft that was advertised. So I did talk to him about that, and his recommendation is not to include those in this. If you decide to take action, if you want to include those, you should withdraw this application and then revise the text and take it to a new public hearing. You also talked about delaying the decision until the case that's working its way through the Supreme Court is Connecticut Supreme Court, excuse me, is decided. You decided at that point you you're comfortable moving forward with the decision, and if the court case came down with some changes that needed to be made to these regulations, you would deal with it at that time. So this morning, this afternoon, we sent you a draft motion for consideration to adopt the regulations as they were written. And you've got a couple of options here. You can go ahead and take action if you like. You can, if you really want to add the new definition and you really want to make some tweaks to the RM language, you can withdraw this application and then rework the language and then submit a new application. You could also wait until you have more members present to discuss this. Your your call.
Okay. So we can make it make a decision tonight where where we want to proceed. We can, as Deb said, we can decide that we will approve what we have now and then make the two editorial changes that we talked about later. We can delay it. We can withdraw it, or we can vote the motion down. Now, see what people's thoughts are.
Has there been any word from the Supreme Court?
No, there's no. And and when I I talked to the town attorney about that briefly, and he said it's it's just really hard to predict.
Yeah.
He yeah, he said probably this year. That's that's as far as he's willing to go.
I mean, I would be more comfortable waiting until there's more people here. This was such a big project for us that it didn't seem like that I would, you know, I mean, if somebody wants to weigh in.
But yeah, but we sort of reached an agreement that we had two action.
Yeah.
I think everybody agreed with what Deb just went over. And the two action items were the change to clarify the RM.
Yeah, I was okay with that.
It's technically it was okay, but it's hard to understand it.
Yeah.
Without you didn't have some with the background wasn't there. And the other one was to add a definition for primary residence, I mean, what that meant.
Right, yeah.
Technically.
So the only issue that I had with that, and I don't, you know, what other people think, but the word lessee kind of for me, I thought we were trying to keep everything very concise and that sort of you know, makes it more difficult to track that person down if they're.
But they still have. See, did that still end there?
Yeah, but it's still, yeah, but that wasn't a point that anybody was that everybody, anybody raised when we reviewed it last time. Because the lessee really would have the same, have to have the same proof of residence that if it was a property.
Yeah, that's, I mean, I think the thing is for me, it's that trying to find that person, if there was an issue, would be could be extremely difficult. They've rented a property, and now they've left the property and are somewhere else. And they're short-term, they're renting it as a short-term rental. And and now, when there's an issue, the zoning official has to find that, or the owner may not even know that it's being short-term rental.
Yeah. Yeah, but it's.
Subleasing essentially.
But all we're doing is putting a regulation in for somebody starting, establishing how it's operated. Because we can't do operation.
And and the term lessee is is used in the the section where you require either the owner or or the lessee to be in the in the house when they're renting, when when they're renting it to.
I thought we took that out, and it was just that.
No, it's still there.
It didn't know.
That was your comment.
When look, yeah.
I liked the fact that we were gonna take that out.
Uh, yeah, absolutely. I know. These have not changed from the application.
Right.
Right. So it 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 reads in the RRU and RM district, the owner or lessee of the lot must have their primary residence in one unit of a two-unit dwelling, in the principal dwelling unit, or an illegally permitted accessory dwelling unit.
Yeah, but it's the person that doesn't have to be on site, just.
Primary residence.
Yeah, no, so um I guess, I mean, if you rent the house and you've got a one-year lease, now you're the lessee.
If you're there for, if you spend at least half a year in the house.
Not necessarily.
That, no, because you you have to have a primary resident.
It doesn't say that in the first part.
No, stick owner or lessee.
Yeah, but there's somewhere else that talks, doesn't it, that talks about?
I'm just, you know, I just, I think the thing for me is that I, and maybe, maybe that's fine, but I just don't want to make things more confusing than they, let me just look at it and see what it.
But some people run for years.
Yeah, well, yeah, no, no doubt. It's a.
So you'd have to rent it if you signed a lease, you'd have to rent.
Yeah, I don't think there's gonna, truthfully, I don't believe that this is gonna be a problem. I don't think there's gonna be too many people renting houses out and then turning around in short-term.
Unless they.
Leasing them unless it's somebody who's doing it to try to. I don't know why.
But if it is such a small minority, why are we accommodating that? I know, it just seems.
Yeah.
No, because some people will rent a house.
Yeah.
On a more or less a permanent basis. And they say they want to go on vacation for a month and then have somebody rent it as a short-term rental.
Yeah, they're the owner of the house. That's fine.
No, not as, they're an owner. You can lease the house. You can lease a house. Some people do that. They lease a house and live there for several years. Because it's expensive to move.
Yeah, but I thought we were trying to get away from not having a short-term rental. We're just considering short-term.
The real, yeah, but a real, the the original short-term rentals were is you rented the place because you weren't there, because you went on vacation or something.
Right.
And that's the original purpose. Now you have the businesses that have been established, where people buy property just for the purpose to only short-term rent.
Mm-hmm.
It's a short-term.
Which we're trying to.
And that's what we're trying to.
Discourage.
Discourage.
But as Mike pointed out, having to let a lessee now be the person who is now considered.
It's a primary resident in that house, which means they're there for at least six months of the year. Which is no different than an owner.
It's, where does he follow his taxes? Where would he follow his taxes?
First, how that owns a house property.
They'd have to be the primary owner. I just, it seems seems difficult, makes it a little more difficult when there's a problem and the zoning official has to find.
Well, that's not the zoning official.
Well, someone's gonna be enforcing, you know, if there's a, or or things that needs need to be updated on the house. Suppose it's the parking or the lighting or whatever it is.
Doesn't meet the requirements.
Yeah, well, but who who's responsible for that? If the zoning official shows up and, you know, the lighting isn't, I don't know what, it just seems like it's a throws a wrench into a into the works that.
Yeah, but what this regulation would affects starting or having the ability to have a have a short-term rental. That's what it's doing. It's not maintaining. It's just the ability. Like you can to establish. A piece of land, you can build a house. Well, this is saying you can have a short-term rental in that house. That's all it is. It's not how you how you do it.
I just, it just seems like it's the management of it that becomes very much more difficult.
But we're not doing that.
Well, we're we're trying to manage.
No, we're not.
How these things are gonna happen.
Conditions that we've set.
I suppose, maybe it's not the word manage, it's.
Conditions.
The initial conditions. So that's why I don't think, I think you can live with the word lessee because some it it's no different than a property if the person is there six months of the year. I think the operation of it may have to be done with somebody setting up some rules on how you operate them or maintain them or tax them. As the town taxes, you know, that's an ordinance, that's the town council. And I look at this thing as when it gets issued, it's the background, we can sit down with the council and come up with an ordinance to enforce something in existing properties.
I don't know if that makes it easier.
Well, that gives you a foundation.
Yeah, no, it's just that one word that I, you know. I don't know what.
And and I'll note that I did not have the conversation with the town attorney about that particular change, but given that he was uncomfortable with minor edits for the multifamily zone, I suspect he would say the same thing. If you want to remove that, you should withdraw the application and then.
Because that would be a big change.
Yeah.
Even though it might not affect anybody.
No doubt.
But I see no difference between an owner, owner or a lessee.
I guess I am uncomfortable with that because that was one of the words that we had discussed as being.
But when we went over.
Yeah, I wasn't here that night.
In February.
I wasn't here that night. Yeah. Mike was supposed to do all the fighting.
Well, it's, you know, I think it came at the last minute, that's what it amounted to, and then it it was sort of, you know, for all the discussion that we had, that wasn't, those last changes weren't discussed.
Really makes no difference because we're, the only thing we're saying is a person to have a short-term rental, you have to have, it has to be your residence. The house has to be a residence.
You have to own the house.
No, no, they're a residence, yes. It does, whether you own it or lease it, does it make any difference?
Well, I think you have a a bigger stake in the game if you own it and you care about your neighbors. If I go down and rent a place down and, you know, down the beach somewhere, I mean, do I care about that as much as my own house? I don't know.
You would only lease, you have to, would have to lease it for a year.
Who says that?
Because it says you have to have a permanent residence.
That means six months or greater.
Yeah, well, I guess you couldn't, you know, you'd have, yeah, but then you wouldn't be there as short-term rental. Unless you had a year's lease. If you only leased it for six months, you'd have to be there and use it all the time.
Well, reluctantly, I'll go along with it because I think it's a very small population, and every one of these I see is going to require a special permit, correct?
Uh, most of them, that's correct, yes.
Yeah.
And it's not in any RS.
Right, right.
It's really very limited.
Yeah.
So the buildings in an RS.
So I mean, we'll know that, and I think it will be a very small population because that would require somebody who doesn't even technically own the house, who's leasing the house, to come forward and see staff for a special permit and go through that whole process to get a short-term rental in a house that they don't own.
And that, that person who owns the house may not even want it.
Yeah, that seems like a whole lot of work.
Any application would have to be signed by the property owner.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, okay, all right. So, you know, I'm, I, like I said, I don't think there's too many of these things. I wanted to talk about it. I don't like it, but it's.
So on the big issue, though, I do feel comfortable because we have hashed this out many, many nights. And though I wasn't here for the February meeting, I had to listen to it.
I know, and you were here for the public hearing.
Yeah. I was here for the public hearings, and I do feel comfortable with the wording.
So what are your thoughts on taking the action? Do we want to go with a motion?
What?
We can withdraw it? We can take the motion and vote it down?
What? I will uh, I will support the motion as written.
I I think it's worth it just to is a stepping stone.
Yep. And we can make those tweaks.
And.
As necessary.
As necessary.
Yeah, to start over again would be crazy.
Well, I I would definitely support it the way that it is, you know, that's fine. I was just wanted to voice my concerns. There you go.
There you go. Good job.
Noted.
So we think we can.
Do you have it printed?
I've printed.
Okay. I have additional copies if anybody needs them.
Did you have? So I'll make a a motion to approve zoning regulation text amendment application. R E G A twenty-three dash zero 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 one to one. Amend section two point one to add new short-term rental definition. Two, amend section four point one table of permitted uses to add short-term rentals. Three, add new section five point one dash seven point C, short-term rental. The Town of Groton Planning and Zoning Commission adopts zoning regulation text amendment Rega twenty-three zero 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 one pursuant to the following findings and reasons for approval. One, this zoning text amendment is consistent with the town's twenty-sixteen Plan of Conservation and Development with particular regards to preserving and enhancing community character as recommended in section two, and to accommodating housing needs as a change as noted in section three. Two, this amendment is consistent with the town's municipal coastal program in C S C G S section twenty-two A dash ninety through twenty-two A dash one eleven. Three, this amendment is made in accordance with a comprehensive plan for the Town of Groton and provides a reasonable consideration of the environment and Long Island Sound in accordance with the provisions of C G S eight dash two. The effective date of this amendment shall be May fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, aim discussion on the motion? Hearing none will vote on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously.
Extension cord like how it brings.
Cord.
How brings an extension cord just in case.
Well, you can move.
No, it's not. It's not even gonna work. I'm okay. I'm all right. I still have power. I just, it's getting loud.
Just have a complacency. Okay, the next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of previous meetings. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March twenty-six, twenty twenty-four.
I would second, second that.
Moved and sent, so it. Does anyone have any corrections to the minutes?
I do not.
I had, on page three, I had one.
Page three of the minutes?
Of the minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Down at the very bottom. The second from last line, it says controls installed for the newly proposed zip line in compacted gravel handicap spots, I think parking spots.
Yes.
Just to say what spots. I think on page, the last page, page eleven, report of commission in us, under uh that paragraph, on the second line, it says he reports that there was an idea for chi-change charging for parking by using, actually, that should be a phone app. But I think we should insert something. But was, there was no but it was not, not so, but the phone app was not selected since there is no ability to wave the fee. Some words to that. That's what he was trying to say, because I believe that's what he was saying.
Yeah.
But they couldn't hu-use it for that reason. That's all. Accessory record at the eleven pages.
It was a long meeting.
It was a long.
It was a long.
It was a really long meeting, yes.
Are there any other corrections?
Yep.
And then we'll vote on the motion to approve the minutes of March twenty-six, twenty twenty-four as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. We have public communications. So anyone on the com-commission have anything to say? Staff?
No.
And we have the two that are listed here that are in our package. Does anyone in the public wish to address the commission tonight other than what's on the agenda? Okay.
And also note late this afternoon, you did get another correspondence from Diane Glenn-Bosky.
I saw that.
Well, I can see that.
Yeah, it just some discussion of open space, school redevelopment, housing, just a lot of information.
Okay. On the town council one, we can put that in some sort of place where we can consider that for P O C D development.
For sure.
Yep, two bullets that are on that.
Well, it was their housing, the housing issue.
Yeah.
I think we should, it's too complex. And I think we should respond to that back to the council and saying that that we're, that's what we're doing.
So the the matter will be considered when you develop the P O C D.
Because they're very complex and can't be considered immediately or can't immediately be considered for.
Well, I mean, you.
Regulations.
You could, if you if you wanted to so, start talking about regulations that address those items, I mean, you can, you can do that now if you like.
We don't.
Up to you.
I don't know, maybe people want to.
So I don't know what, do do we have any idea what they were talking, what they were hinting at?
One was trailer, was the trailer plan.
They were, they were looking at the affordable housing plan, and there are some recommendations for changes in zoning in that plan. Among those are consideration of developing regulations for new mobile home parks.
Open space.
Right, there's considering open space subdivisions, which, you know, allow less infrastructure and smaller lots. You have to have a minimum of twenty acres before you can use that regulation. So one of their recommendations is consider reducing that to maybe ten acres, maybe five acres, and allowing an open space subdivision on a smaller initial parcel. Yeah. So I think the the council just wanted you to be aware of those recommendations and to think about, you know, they're aware that there's a housing crunch. And so they're, you know, asking that that you consider those.
At the top of our.
Yeah, exactly.
More in there too.
Absolutely.
So I think that should be considered.
Yep.
Because if we have time, we can look.
Okay.
I mean, it could be that, or maybe some of these things we could pull out as, but in their letter, I didn't quite, because it didn't go into, it said one of the items was consider changes to accessory dwelling unit regulations.
I didn't understand.
But then when I looked at the, at the housing plan, I didn't see a whole lot.
Right, right. It said essentially that. It didn't, it didn't really give us more detail.
I didn't know what kind of direction they were like.
But there could be, I mean, certainly there could be more. You've already changed it to address state statute to make them larger, but you could you could allow two accessory dwelling units on properties under certain.
Well, that's why I think.
There are some other, right.
Plan as a plan.
Yep.
You know, like the water's correspondence was interesting on the trailer park.
Mm-hmm, again, yeah, it was, yeah.
Says that maybe we ought to think about it more. Unless we want to just say if you already have an existing park and you have some open land.
I mean, right, I mean, because we don't right now.
We could consider that.
Right.
Just expansion of existing?
Yep, that could be something. I mean, right now, you're not allowed, you're allowed to reconfigure, but not add units.
Maybe, maybe what we should do since we have a short, not few people here tonight, maybe we should put it on the 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 correspondence on our next agenda.
Yep, exactly.
Agenda.
So you have more.
Decide what we want to do for action.
Sure.
Might be the best.
Okay.
I mean, that is something that might.
A good compromise.
Good compromise, and then maybe, if you do something like that, are they treated like a subdivision? Is there open space requirements?
No, 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 it depends what you write.
So you could write something that if you add a hundred units, then.
Right, you could do all kinds of things. I mean, you could require that they have front porches. You could require recreational amenities. You could require X number of parking spaces for each one. I, I mean, you could just write the design guidelines similar to what you do for apartment complexes, right?
What was that other thing that years ago we developed for smaller houses?
Cottage cottage communities. Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, that was kind of like a template.
It 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 is, it is. I mean, you could do a cottage community with modular houses if that's what you wanted on, you know, the small footprints and 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 the design that's required by that. Yep.
How are they treated? I mean, it's a housing stock or use and I mean, it's meets all the building codes. How is it any different than anything else?
Well said that.
No, I mean, it's.
If it doesn't have a concrete foundation.
That's correct. It doesn't, although it's it's generally on a pad.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, and you know, building code, it's going to require it be tied down, you know, just because.
I wonder too with them is how they're going to meet, because a lot of the codes now are requiring for like insulation. I mean, you can barely build the house anymore without an eight inch wall.
Oh, really?
It, it's getting that strict. And so, um, I mean, you can do, I mean, or, or without spray foam insulation, it's just becoming very, very strict. And so.
But I think we should discuss this.
Sure.
That's a whole condition.
All right, we'll put that on.
Yeah, let's see what we want to do with it. Cause I, after reading Watcher's correspondence, I thought this is a very, could be a very complex, if you wanted to allow development and new, new, um, places like this to expand it just for an existing place. They have a few extra square feet that you could put another couple.
Yeah, there, I mean, there are some parks who have adjacent property.
You might want.
Or, or excess property, but they can't add any more units.
Possibly a good compromise. Possibly a good compromise.
Okay, so next special permits, we have non subdivisions. We have a report for Colonel Ledger dates. Would you want to go over that?
Sure, sure. So, um, they did add some, they are actually moving along. Um, they've, you can see that they have estimated completion dates, um, sometime in May for a number of the items. Um, I also had a conversation yesterday with, um, the landscaper who is putting in the, the new trees. Um, those actually have been ordered and are now on site, so we'll be getting some street trees out there soon. I mean, they're, they're progressing to try to have it completed, um, this summer.
Seems like they've been, uh, very responsive.
They, they, they heard it. They heard it loud and clear.
I mean, yeah, it seems good to me.
Yeah, but I, I still want them to continue to give us these monthly reports.
Just the
Yep.
Forcing the issue of the report tends to get action.
Yep.
Oh, one thing that was not on that report was the fourth foot versus five foot.
The sidewalks, yeah, the, yeah, Public Works is going to require five foot wide sidewalks along Deerfield Ridge Road, which is the one that goes all the way over to Colonel Ledger. The little cul-de-sac can have four foot.
So there has been a decision.
Yes.
Made them.
Yes. And they were prepared to abide by whatever Public Works said.
Cause the last time it was up in the air.
Right.
So what did they end up doing? Splitting the difference?
Yeah, small cul-de-sac, it's four, four feet sign. Um, but Deerfield Ridge, you know, basically goes from what, uh, Pumpkin Hill all the way over to to Colonel Ledger.
So anybody have any other questions on that report? Old business, we had. Hey, then, uh, next item, the site plans, we have a S I T twenty four zero zero, zero five Harbor View Care Home. Back to her. Fourteen Godfrey Street.
Good evening.
Uh, can you wait till we're set up here? That's out, that way they can see it, uh, on the line.
Put it on the big screen.
Yeah, it goes up on that.
Zoom in a bit on it.
Okay, good evening. Speak into the microphone because we have to record.
Okay, can you hear me? Good.
You can, you can also pull that right out of the, out of the stand there. No, you can just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Good evening, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, my name is Derek Gibbs, uh, owner of, uh, I'm gonna go with Harbor View, uh, Care Home. I believe it's side, but I have to double check that one. Um, it is at fourteen Godfrey Street, uh, in Mystic. I'm the property owner. Um, I did hire, uh, Indigo Land Design, um, to, um, help with the site plan. Um, Joe Wren is, uh, currently on vacation and I'm, uh, uh, stepping in to, to do this presentation. Uh, there is, uh, Carolyn Oh, 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 Hagan, I believe, um, she's from. Okay, and she's, uh, she's on standby if we have any questions regarding the site plan. Um, and, uh, Roger Engel um, is our, um, uh, landscape designer, um, for the property. Uh, just to give you a little overview of the property, um, it, it, it was formerly a residential care facility, uh, licensed with the Department of Public Health as a twenty-five bed, uh, residential care home. Um, the construction, um, approximately, uh, took about seven years, um, to complete. Um, the per, the building was purchased by myself as a foreclosure, um, property. Um, and, uh, since owning the property, um, majority of the work that needs to be completed is the exterior um, site work that was never completed on, on, on this property. Uh, like I said, it was a twenty-five bed, um, care facility that predominantly provides services to elderly and disabled folks and assisting them with, uh, A D Ls, activities of daily living. Uh, most of the folks that reside at this property, um, or formerly resided on this property, uh, were over the age of sixty-five, um, elderly, um, with, um, uh, disabilities such as, uh, uh, depression, um, borderline personality disorder, uh, bipolar, things like that. Um, my plan with the property is to specifically, uh, sort of target, if you will, um, individuals that are disabled still, um, elderly and over the age of sixty-five, um, that need assistance, um, and can't live and reside in their home. The property will provide twenty-four hour care. Um, there will be one person at least on site at all times. Property has a commercial kitchen. Uh, we provide three meals a day and two snacks, an array of activities. Um, some of the rooms on the property are private. There's approximately fro- five private rooms um, on the property and there are ten shared rooms, um, with adjoining bathrooms throughout the facility or toilet rooms is what I should call them. Um, majority of the work that needs to be done, like I said, is, uh, exterior site work, which is, uh, uh, a stone driveway, um, which you'll see on the plans there. Um, the, uh, driveway was never completed with the exterior parking, um, was never completed either. Um, and so we will, uh, plan to put in a stone driveway. You'll see in the beginning, um, as you enter through Godfrey Street on the left-hand side. Um, uh, we have a cobblestone, um, apron, yes, thank you. Um, and, uh, stone that goes throughout. And the reason, um, uh, particularly that we looked at stone, uh, was there had been a lot of conversations, uh, with neighbors, um, that I did knock on doors regarding, uh, uh, stormwater runoff. Um, and so we really didn't want to create something that would cause, uh, more issues with the surrounding properties uh, with rainwater runoff. Uh, the, uh, parking will have, uh, ten parking spaces and one handicap spot. Uh, we did speak with the Department of Public Health regarding, um, um, ADA compliance. Um, the, uh, handicap spot, um, as you can see there, and it says on the plan will be uh, paved. Um, the rest of the property, uh, the driveway will be, like I said, stone. There will also be, um, what do they call it? Wheel stops, um, uh, in front of the all not, all ten parking spaces. And, uh, there is a sidewalk, um, completion that, um, pretty much stops. And I don't, should I walk up there and show you where? Okay, okay. Just something about the head thing, right? So, um, uh, approximately, where am I here? Okay, so the, the sidewalk stops are currently around this area here. And so, um, we will uh, continue the sidewalk all along this path, um, uh, uh, pretty much following the, uh, the, uh, ten parking spaces. Um, so allow people that are parking here to walk the sidewalk as well as the handicap spot will be able to get out, um, and enter the building as well as, um, go inside on the patio, things like that. Um, we did have an ADA, uh, uh, compliance person there last week to go over the plans um, and the interior of the building. It met, um, all of the ADA, um, compliance requirements, uh, which he did provide a report. If you need that, I can provide that to you as well. I just got it this morning. Um, and, uh, once the, uh, exterior site work is completed, um, um, which I did send him this plan as well. He agrees that, um, it will meet all of the ADA compliant requirements as well. And, um, uh, the parking, uh, again, having, uh, ten parking spaces and one handicap spot does meet the Department of Public Health regulations as well. Uh, the regulation is that it needs to have, uh, one parking space per, uh, per three residents in the building. And as I stated before, there are, um, uh, twenty-five residents. Um, there are s- some draining requirements as well. We did have a, um, a surveyor go out to confirm, uh, that the drainage was completed. There are, uh, this would be an Indigo Land Design, um, if you had questions about the dry wells that are on the property, but I, I know that there are some dry wells on the property, um, as well as, uh, uh, drainage was uh, connected to the public sewer line as well. That was also confirmed, um, to help with again store, stormwater runoff. Uh, in terms of lighting, uh, there are going to be, uh, bollard, bollard lighting, um, along the um, sidewalk, which I, uh, I'll go back over here and indicate there are, uh, a few black, I believe circles that you'll see, um, here, here and here, which will, um, provide lighting um, along the sidewalk there, um, as folks are getting out of their car. Um, and I think there are approximately four. Um, um, thanks, um, for, um, as you can see here, one, two, three, four, um, driveway light, lights that are also going to be, uh, installed on the property. That was a recommendation from the, uh, fire marshal, um, to provide lighting. Um, the lighting that we're going to provide will be, uh, minimal. Um, considering that this is a residential zone, um, there are neighbors in the back there and we want to be respectful of, uh, our budding neighbors there. Uh, there's a request for sidewalk elimination, um, as well. Uh, we feel that, um, uh, putting sidewalks on Godfrey Street wouldn't, uh, be appropriate, um, for the neighborhood. Um, currently there are no sidewalks. Um, and in addition, uh, those sidewalks in this plan would not connect uh, to the sidewalks that we're putting in. So, uh, we would ask for permission to eliminate that request. And the last thing is, um, I'll let, um, Roger, uh, speak regarding the landscaping, which is a pretty extensive plan, um, to add, uh, additional landscaping around the property that has, uh, not been completed.
In there as well. Yeah, just turn the plan sheet.
All right, thank you. Um, I'll probably.
Did you say your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is, uh, Roger Engel. I did the landscape design, um, for the project. So I'll walk you through, uh, what we did here. Um, along the west side of the property, um, there was already a lot of pre-existing screening installed by the previous owners. Uh, there were a few gaps over here, so we added evergreen trees, uh, around here and here to fill those gaps. And then the other side of the property, we did add evergreens along the parking area, uh, to help screen the neighbor that's right here as well as evergreens lower down, uh, the drive to screen the neighbors over here. Uh, we've added native flowering trees and a shade tree. So those are four in the front and then two along the parking and one at the end of the parking. Um, there is a recreation area in the back that has, uh, ten raised beds that will have perennials in them. And then along the foundation of the building, uh, there's a mix of evergreens and perennials that will provide year-round screening. We do have evergreens in front of the A C units in both areas to provide screening from the road. Uh, what else? And, yeah, the, uh, uh, shrubs and perennials that we chose will basically provide a nice year-round interest. We have evergreens and then things that'll flower straight from late winter into, into fall.
Sure, I'll just fill in, um, a few things here. So fourteen Godfrey Street, um, the zoning here is R S twelve, which is, uh, a residential zone. Um, there has been, um, a care, a licensed care facility here since nineteen fifty-six. Um, some folks were, may remember it as Rita's Rest Home. Um, it was then Mystic River Residential Care. In two thousand and nine, the owners of Mystic River Residential Care came to the Planning Commission um, to, to upgrade the facility, to put a large addition on, to remove, um, an older house that was part of the complex. Um, recognizing that, that this particular use is not allowed in an R S zone. Um, the, the Planning Commission granted a reasonable accommodation, um, to allow this, uh, improvement to happen here. Um, so as you probably know, the, the buildings were built, um, one wing was C O'd uh, and a bond taken for the, um, remaining site work. But then due to some financial issues, the site work was never completed. So the driveway was never done. The parking was never done. So that's, that's basically what this site plan is meant to do, is to finish out the, the, the work on the outside of the building. Um, recreational amenities, which were shown on the original plan in the back where the planter boxes are and the pergola, those will be installed. Um, the walkways will be completed, uh, obviously the parking lot and lighting will also be completed. Um, they have asked for the elimination of the frontage sidewalk along Godfrey Street. It, that walk is not, um, recommended by the master trail pedestrian and bike plan. Um, there are no plans to put sidewalks along Godfrey Street, um, in any near future at all. Um, I think that's, that's pretty much it.
Up to commissioners for, um, questions and comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How, how different is this from what was required with Rita's?
Mystic River Residential Care, yes. Uh, well, obviously the, the building footprint's the same.
Yeah.
Um, there's a change in the surface of the parking area. Um, that site plan, I think only proposed ten stalls. Eleven are proposed here. Drainage is similar. The drainage was all installed and connected to the drainage system in Godfrey Street. Um, it, it, it's, uh, there's some minor variations in the landscaping, but that's kind of it.
Any different to me than what we've already been waiting for, for the last fifteen years? So I'm glad that you're doing this. Uh, I have no issue with the sidewalk being put in. I don't think that it's needed, so. Not gonna.
Anything else?
That's it.
Steve? Um, did, this has been closed for how many years?
I, I don't, five, three?
Three years.
Okay.
Three years. And is there any, um, has there been any, you know, vandalism on the site or anything? And knock on wood, good.
That's not wood.
So it started out as seven.
Yeah.
Twenty-five, back to twenty, and now you're twenty-five again?
It, it never went to twenty.
Yeah.
River was a twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Oh, twenty-five.
That's right.
And ten parking spaces with only one ADA on a healthcare facility, just, I don't know, it just doesn't.
It, it's building code.
Meets everything. I had one other one, but it slipped. Yeah, okay.
Who's doing lighting? With the old plan, there was, uh, some concerns with the neighbors on, I guess it's the east side, the downhill side, I think were drained it.
That's correct. That's correct.
Wasn't there, was there a noise or something?
No, I don't think there was noise. I think it really was. It was the.
Yeah, I think there was a fence.
Fence was on the other side. Um, drainage definitely on the downhill side. Um, as it turned out, the, the pipes were not connected correctly. Um, that, that has been fixed. Exactly, yeah. Right. We have not heard, we have not heard of any issues. That's right. That's right.
Oh, can I ask one more question? The paper street, wasn't there a paper street?
There is, there still is.
And does that affect anything?
Uh, that's where the driveway is.
Oh, and that's okay to put this on it?
Absolutely.
I just remember that was some, that was something.
It was basically the same.
Same configuration. That's right.
Just fine finishing. So if there's no others, is the applicant seeing the motion?
Yes.
Do you have any concerns of a motion?
No.
No.
So I'll make a motion to approve a site plan S I T twenty-four dash zero 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 five for Harbor View Care Home, fourteen Godfrey Street with the following modifications. One, the drainage system inspection report shall be submitted to the Office of Planning and Development Services prior to the issuance of a certificate of site plan completion. Two, technical items as identified by staff shall be addressed. Findings, the commission finds that the requirement for a frontage sidewalk should be eliminated, as a sidewalk is not recommended by the Master Bicycle Pedestrian and Trails Plan, and there are no plans to install a sidewalk along Godfrey Street. Is there a second?
Second.
Smoked and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? During, um, the whole discussion, we'll vote on the, uh, on the motion of for site plan twenty-four zero 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 five. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And it's good to see it finally. Oh, right. I'll appoint you, Mike.
All right, there you go. Not that it makes
No, we have to. I'll appoint you then.
Oh, it does, okay. That's fine. Thank you.
Good night.
Have a good night.
Thank you all. Have a good night. No questions for me, I guess. It's okay. Have a good night.
Been a long night, Matt.
It's good to see. I was afraid it would just
Yeah. Vandals into it, it would have been a disaster. Yeah. No, I think those kinds of things are good. You need that and it's in the neighborhood. It's, uh, fits in nice. It's been there.
But, no, it's good to see it.
Small, huh? Small place.
Okay, and we have referrals. We have C G S eight twenty-four, Lisa. Town property for Communication Towers sixty-eight, brought in one point, row.
Right, so this is the former Tarpon Towers? Well, it still is Tarpon Towers, the one that was proposed in Noank. Um, they have been negotiating with the town to take over the, the tower that's currently up at the police station. Take over maintenance and any repairs. They may have to raise it another ten feet and they will do all of that, but it's to lease the land. So under state statute, eight dash twenty-four, any leases have to come to the Planning Commission for recognition.
Would you tell your, your fearless leader that Andrews Island is not in Noank, it's in Stone King?
I didn't write that referral. Yes.
Well, that's what I said. I assume the town, well, we don't care. We'll give, uh, cell phone service to know. We have to have a motion on this.
Um, if you find it consistent with the plan of conservation and development, yeah. Yeah, and, and, I mean, I, I took a look through it. Um, I mean, it, you've got recommendations to enhance and maintain community facilities. Obviously, this is a community facility. Protect scenic views, moving it up here. Um, protects the, the views from further down south in Noank.
In other motion.
I did not.
So you can draft one up to?
So, so if, yeah, although you can just make the motion to find it consistent with the plan of conservation and development, and I'll just add in which sections. Yeah.
I'll make a motion to say that the C G S A or the lease of town property for Communication Tower sixty-eight, brought in one point, is consistent with plan of conservation and development. Sir, second. Any discussion on the motion during non-emotion, vote on the motion? The Communication Tower sixty-eight, brought in one point, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion is carried unanimously.
Is that imminent?
Signing the lease, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
At least they go off the road.
Exactly.
I mean, that seems like a
Yeah.
I attended a couple of those meetings that, when they were proposing it right on the water, and I'm like, that is the worst, you know, location, because half of it is going in the water.
Yeah.
It's
Well, it'd get better coverage where it's up high too.
But absolutely. And that was one of the places that they didn't have on their maps to show how coverage would be improved. And that was always like, uh, why didn't you pick that? You know? Good result.
I think, yeah, makes a lot more sense and concentrate everything too.
Yeah.
Okay, commission reports, reported chair. I have nothing to report. Does anyone on the commission have anything to report? Report as staff? Do you have any?
I, I don't. I'm just gonna note, now that we're done with short-term rentals, we are going to turn our attention to the childcare regulations to be consistent with state statute. So that's one you've already, you looked at probably three months ago.
Oh.
So, yeah, but I'll put it on the next agenda just to refresh your memory before I put in the application.
And you have a note tablet?
We do, we do. Bryce Kelly, he'll be starting at the end of the month.
I went to your boss's meetings.
I heard, yeah. I heard Bryce was there. Yeah. Yep, yep.
Well, you're up to
We'll get there. Yeah, we'll get him, you know, we'll get him trained up and, yeah.
Oh, you need it.
I know. We do.
It's tough. Okay, and we have our A S P report. And applications up there. On the, uh,
Why are you looking? That, what's, what's, uh, going on right across the street from Johnson's?
I don't know.
Yeah, there's a million trees.
I don't know. I don't know. We have not talked to anyone about that.
Cause it seems like a pretty
Yep, yeah.
They're cut.
Oh, I'm surprised.
No, we haven't talked to anyone.
It's clearing up the clinic.
Wow.
Yeah, an A S P report, you have on the midway oval, S R Customs and Gunsmithing, have a look, see.
Yes, it, it's basically a gun repair. Oh, yeah, yep, yep. Needs a, it needs a federal, needs a federal license. It does, and they have to show evidence that they have town approval. Yeah, it's a home occupation.
What? That's, you approve all these residential businesses?
The home, if they're, the, right, depending on the size, right. Yeah, yeah, larger ones have to come for special permits.
Oh, really?
Yep.
Cause I thought we got one on some bakery.
Yeah, yeah, the home, yeah, absolutely, yeah. Um, did you really?
Addressed to it. I don't know whether we voted on it.
Okay, I mean, we get
That's why I was surprised.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I mean, there are special regulations in the health code for, you know, home bakers. And if they wanna sell their products, you know, they, they get a home occupation permit to us.
That's probably why. It was more than Does anyone have any concern or questions on the A S P report?
Has anything been sold in, um, in, um, right on Main Street in Mystic?
Um, in Central Hall?
Yes.
Yeah, I think so. I think one or two units have been sold.
Really?
Yeah, yeah.
Or unaffordable. How much should they get for those?
Uh, there, there's still some on the market. They're, they're pricey.
Over a million, right?
Well, those in that, on Three Water Street.
Those are also.
They were almost a million dollars.
Well, the ones at Central Hall are over a million, so.
Oh, they are?
They are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's something, but they have water.
And water underneath.
More water everywhere.
Yeah. Yeah, it's as bad as a one million dollar house, a million, the house of a million dollar. I still can't believe. I thought that was just a feeling. To get somebody interested in buying that property. And then they paid a hundred K more than the asking price.
Oh.
Wow. Does anybody have anything else? I'll make a motion for adjournment. Is there a second?
Second. Eight oh five.
All right, thank you.
Oh, I thought this would be